Call to order, September meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. Please join me in a moment of prayer or reflection. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this life that we enjoy, including our ability to meet in peace here tonight. We call on you to guide us, provide our board with wisdom and understanding so that we may make decisions and recommendations that will best serve the current and future citizens of Morrisville. We ask also that you bring healing and hope to those who have been affected by the recent hurricanes. Bring comfort to those who have lost loved ones. We thank you for the first responders and volunteers who are helping, and we ask that you protect our armed forces and first responders throughout the world. Father, guide us better to serve you, our neighbors, and our nation. These things we ask in your name. Amen. So we have a new alternate member, welcome, Rob. Some of us, I think, our terms have been renewed, so we need to sign in and swear.
Do you want to do it from up there?
I think we can do it down there, we'll be fine. So remind us, if you would, Marty, who is...
I'm going to do it over here.
Yeah.
I'm going to do it over here. I'm going to do it over here. I'm going to do it over here. And I will be standing right here. I solemnly swear, Lord God, that I will support...
Solemnly swear, Lord God, that I will support...
And maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina.
Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with their...
Not inconsistent with their...
I have faithfully discharged the duties...
Have faithfully discharged the duties.
...of my office as a member...
Of office as a member.
...of the Planning and Zoning Board of the Town of Morrisville.
Of the Planning and Zoning Board of the Town of Morrisville.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the laws of Lord God.
According to the laws of Lord God.
Thank you.
So now we're all official. That's good. And forgive me if you've heard the story before, but a few years ago, we were swearing in one alternate, and the town clerk at the time had got halfway through the swearing before she realized that she was actually swearing in somebody as a special constable. Great job, Marty. Thank you. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes from August? Any changes or corrections? Moving on, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August.
Make motion to approve of that from August 10, 17, PZB meeting.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. And my apologies, we have one prominent member not here at the moment, that's Esther, so, Lee, I'm going to ask you if you would be the voting member tonight. So we'll let you off the hook tonight, Rob. Item number five, it's one of those bittersweet moments when we get to recognize someone who's volunteered, and we appreciate that service very much, but regret that they've moved on to other things. So Rex, if you wouldn't mind, if you could just come to the front.
I'd like to present you with this, and thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. Appreciate your... ...the opportunity. Stranger.
Hello.
Try not to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for the block. I appreciate it.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rex.
Good job.
Okay, we're going to move on to item six, which is a public comment session, and we're delighted to have some members of the public with us this evening. Most probably are going to talk about the transportation plan, and if I may, I'm going to outline some sort of rules about that. We're going to be talking about the transportation plan tonight. We have a work session next week, and then next month, we'll also be talking about the transportation plan. So let me assure you as members of the public, if you speak once, we'll remember that. You don't have to come and repeat at the same time, so we're actually going to ask that someone speaks only one of those meetings, not all three. If you have an individual comment, then typically we'll allow about three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you can identify that group, then we'll give you up to maybe six minutes. Each speaker, we're going to ask to give your name and address so that we can record that. And our job here is to listen, not to interact, so if you ask questions, we'll of course take note of that, and the staff will take note of that, but we're not going to be in a question and answer type format. I think that's a kind of outline of the rules, if everybody's comfortable with that. Then we'll open the public comment session and invite people to come up and give us your name and address, and go ahead.
Good evening. I am Bob Butler, and I currently live, as of a week or so ago, at 1603 Bradford View Drive in Cary. For 13 years, I lived at 1118 Crabtree Crossing, and my current residence is strictly temporary because my house sold so quickly, we couldn't find another house in Morrisville. So I'm still very much interested in the future of Morrisville. And the group I represent, Morrisville Action, is about 10 years old. We have several hundred neighbors on our mailing list, and the advisory committee, as well as being a founder, we have sort of a steering committee. It's what you might call grassroots organization, that from time to time has been very active and very impactful on some policies, and we're sort of gearing up again to try to provide positive input on the Crabtree Crossing connection. In 2009, when that was added into the plan, we organized and presented, along with others, quite a bit of good information that led to the Crabtree Crossing connection being removed from the transportation plan. It was thoroughly vetted, and lots of good reasons for it being in and being out were discussed, and then we thought the issue was done. Now, the steering committee continued to monitor the transportation plan, attend meetings and pay attention, as citizen groups often do, sort of from the sidelines quietly, and we didn't see any reinterest in this, but we were very surprised to, after the fourth or fifth public hearing on the transportation plan, it was back in. To our mind, nothing had changed, no compelling development had come up, and so we started to say, well, why was it back in? And apparently, from what we understand, citizens were asked to comment, and they were given an exercise of connecting dots between various roads, and some citizens had seen the convenience of connecting the dots of Town Drive and Crabtree Crossing, so that was enough to get it back in the plan. So a couple of things that I'm going to kind of point out is that, first off, the public process that got this back in and basically overruled the 2009 decision was certainly not best practices. All of the previous or early hearings or public notices about public input opportunities on the plan did not mention Crabtree Crossing connection, so as stakeholders, we just didn't see there anything that affected us, which is a common practice among citizens. It did finally get in the very last notice, in which we, with two days' time, we did turn out some people for a public meeting and express our concerns. We were surprised that even at that meeting, it was not being presented as something being considered, it was being presented as a staff recommendation. So we didn't really understand the process where it went from a citizen connecting dots on a map to staff recommendation. And I'm primarily, for eight years, I served on the Cary, what they used to have as an independent commission like Planning and Zoning for Economic Development, and for those years, I was the co-chairman. So I've been on the other side of these things, and I understand the merits of the town needs, and each citizen kind of defends their neighborhood, but I'm not really here in that position tonight. I'm here to point out some background history that may not have been aware that led to this sort of expedited reintroduction of this connection to the plan. The first thing is, Crabtree Crossing is very unique. It has over 15 islands in a two-lane road, so about 60% of its length is single lane, no pass. So every dump truck, every landscape worker, every bus, every garbage collection stops the traffic completely, and I know from my own professional experience, it's very hard to accommodate that in these models. So there's really a tremendous amount of choke points. The traffic monitoring sensors that the models were based on were not put anywhere near these checkpoints, they were only put in the single lane pass zones, not in the single lane no pass zones, so I believe we have a false impression of tax flow. The other thing that's changed is the intersection of Cary Parkway and High House is now backing up past where Crabtree Crossing comes into Cary Parkway. So there's a tremendous bottleneck there that's not been incorporated in the models, and since it's a backup of traffic, it can't be corrected by putting in a traffic light, so that's another bottleneck. And the other point is, this is not a connector between two residential neighborhoods, with the Triangle Expressway coming down to Town Drive, Town Hall Drive, this will be a connector between Triangle Expressway and Cary Parkway. So this is not a connector between neighborhoods as has been represented. And I think one of the major concerns is, there's a real case of automation bias, you know, believe the model in your own eyes, and we saw with our own eyes during the grade separation project, that the model's saying you can handle 1,600 cars, we put 200 extra cars in there during the grade separation project, and the road completely gridlocked. It backed up to my driveway, where I couldn't even get out of my driveway, I have pictures and photographs of long stops. So if you spend the, I don't know, anywhere between $3 million and $15 million that the exit, that the estimate says, for a nice neighborhood circulation, the main issue here is, you're not going to get it, you're just going to get a gridlocked neighborhood. And I thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Would anybody else like to speak? Do we have anybody else signed up, Marty? Okay. So that moves us ahead to action number eight, rather, item number eight. Whenever you're ready, Ben.
First, close the public session.
Thank you. Good reminder to officially close the public comment session. Thank you.
Actually, can you just keep it open, since it's going to the next two meetings, please?
All right, since I didn't bang the gavel, then with the approval of the board, we'll keep that public comment session open. Thank you, Courtney.
All right, well, I'm going to present or introduce Allison Fluid, who's here from Kimble Horn Associates. That's our consultant on this project. She's going to be giving you a presentation tonight, really a deep dive into the plan, into the draft plan document, to give you a good background of, you know, explain what's in it, how we got here, and where we're going from here. One thing I want to make clear and stress to the board tonight is that the goal of tonight's meeting is really to get you a good baseline of information on the plan and on the draft plan document, and on what's in it, and make sure that you have the information you need to really start reviewing it in depth. We're not, you know, the goal tonight is not necessarily to get into a lot of discussions about what's in the plan, just make sure you have all the information you need, and then at next week's special work session, that's when we really want the board to spend more time to really get into it and have, you know, some discussions and start working through any issues you see in the plan and start formulating, you know, if you like CD changes and whatnot. So as Allison speaks tonight, if you have questions, feel free to ask them, but keep in mind, you know, we're looking for places where you think more information would be helpful, and any clarifying information that you would need, or any questions you have about something that's in the plan, but not really get into in-depth discussion tonight of the plan. And that way, you'll have, you know, we'll have tonight a good presentation, hopefully get you some questions answered, find out if you need some more information, then next week, after you've had yet another week to review the draft plan document, we'll be able to have some, hopefully some good discussion with the board members. All right?
Thank you, Ben.
And with that, I'll be delivered to Allison to begin her presentation.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to present to the board this evening. We're excited to be bringing this first look at the draft document for the comprehensive transportation plan. As Ben alluded to, today, I'm going to essentially be stepping you through the different elements of the document itself, helping to get you oriented. We're very interested in understanding any questions or pieces of information that we may be able to look into, or questions that we can answer from a big-picture perspective that will help facilitate our discussion more effectively next week. So please just let me know throughout the process if there's any questions that you have. And one other thing, you probably will be hearing Ben's voice during the presentation intermittently as well, and the issue of expediency, getting this to you all as quickly as we could, so you have maximum amount of review time. Staff was concurrently reviewing and has supplied us with some comments, some initial comments from their side as well. And so Ben will be able to point out, as we go through here, a couple of things that you may just be aware of that staff has already flagged for us to take attention to. All right. So as I mentioned, I'm just going to step us through the various sections of the plan. You will have noticed there's five chapters of the main body of the document, and then that's going to be supplemented by some supporting appendices as well. So we're going to go pretty much in order. If you all have your documents in front of you, or if you've had the opportunity to look through those documents, you will see that we're trying to follow the flow pretty closely through this presentation, so hopefully we can all stay on the same page. And like I said, jump in at any time with questions. Chapter one was our introduction chapter, just kind of setting the stage for why we're doing this, what the process is all about, giving a little bit of a look into our public engagement process that was included as a part of the plan development, and then the guiding statements that manifested through that engagement, as well as discussions with this group and town council. So the graphic that you see here is actually included in the document, trying to just provide a little bit of information about what all goes into this planning process, and then the multimodal elements, obviously, that are going to result from the process, and that we're going to be covering throughout the document as well. You see that we progress to our multimodal elements, then on into considerations of prioritization, and then finally into the action plan. Just a couple of minutes on the public engagement process. I know that I've had the opportunity to speak with this group about what we have been up to with the public up until this point. Whenever we put together a public engagement process, our intent is to let things kind of follow a very organic framework. We don't like to come to our initial meetings with preconceived notions about what is ultimately going to be included in the plan. So for those of you that were at our opening session, you know that we had a recap of existing conditions, and then had some blank maps out for people to start to give us some thoughts on issues and opportunities that they might see coming out of the process. Just a quick hit the highlights of what we did through this public engagement process. There was community event outreach that Ben led up at Spring Fest. We had work sessions with this group, as well as town council. Two formal public workshops, as well as two public open houses. Those public open houses were smaller events that were held immediately before town council meetings, where we also provided an update of the plan progress to date at those council meetings. And then we also conducted an online survey. That's the graphic that you see here on the right, is actually the results. We had people answer a few structured questions, and then we also gave folks the opportunity to make notations on a map, either points or lines, and give us comments about those. Just a couple of points of interest about the online survey. We had more than 250 participants for the online survey, and more than 600 data points that resulted out of that survey, so we felt pleased that we were able to get that level of participation.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said 200 and how many?
250.
And where are those responses cataloged in the report?
When we have our full outreach concluded, which will include these presentations to the PZB and council, everything will be compiled in an appendix of a full public outreach summary. A portion of that could be made available...
So we're just taking your word for what was said, that we're taking your word at this point, that you reflected what the public said, is that fair to say?
For the content that is in front of you right now, that would be correct. You can see here, I guess this map is a compendium of everything that we did receive online.
What do you mean by compendium?
Well, this map does show all of the digitized comments that were received through the public, the online survey specifically.
So we're the two...
The remainder of comments will be summarized.
You said there's 290-some responses, and I see maybe 10 categories. Help me out with that. How did you decide that?
Sure, sure. Yes.
Well, shouldn't you reflect that? Maybe it's a better answer. Shouldn't you reflect that, and shouldn't you say, we have, we wanted, we had 200 people say we wanted to speed up travel, we had 345 that said we wanted to connect with this, we had two people that thought that it... Shouldn't we, shouldn't they, this map says they're all the same, and they're not all the same, because you didn't get the same response from everybody. To me, that's a flaw in the way you're presenting the information.
And I think where Allison is at the moment is, she's just going through the sections, so she's describing the process. I think we should, you know...
I understand that. I understand that, but she's presenting this as a document that's, that she's reviewed, and she's presenting it as her best document, and I'm saying, maybe not.
So to your point, I think within the body of the document, in an attempt to be brief and kind of just cover the main points, as you mentioned, it does not include a full compendium within the body of the document that will be provided as an appendix, and we can go ahead and assemble the appendix up until this point and have that available for review, and it will continue to be added onto. That's why we hadn't released it out yet, because we want to make sure that any comments that we receive during this process are ultimately also reflected in that appendix, but I will make a note of that. Thank you. Okay. All right. So just closing out, chapter one, you will see our guiding statements for the plan. This is something that you guys are well aware of, because we have brought that up in several different instances through our meetings, but essentially, these were developed in concert with this group, town council, and then brought before the public to get their thoughts on the priorities that we see between all of those different groups, and some of the key points that are unique to the town of Morrisville, as well as responsive to some of the regional needs and requirements that we want to make sure that we are paying attention to, since ultimately, our regional funding partners are going to be essential to the implementation of this plan.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Growth and development. That statement says that you're going to make, that the guiding principles make travel more efficient by coordinating transportation investments with land use decisions. Is that really what we mean to say? We're going to make land use decisions in an effort to make travel more efficient? Is that our goal in land use decisions?
Well, what we did as part of this, and I'm going to move back to the retreat from last year with town council, we asked them at that point kind of two things. One, you know, would they consider funding a land use plan? Because last time, this was funded, not a land use plan update was funded, so it's a little bit different than how it came through the process in 2009. So in the retreat, we talked about the merit of funding a land use plan, especially in conjunction with this. We also at that meeting discussed, there's some scenario planning that occurred in here, and so running the scenarios, and if you remember at kind of a previous update, they showed these scenario plans, you know, and I'd kind of make it candidates to, you know, green is good, and red was horrible, and there was kind of blue in between, and so that was what was feeding that. And what we asked at that time, and we, in some ways, acted as if zoning didn't exist in certain areas, so we took a look at McCrimmon, the extension, which is currently all industrial management, doesn't allow places for, doesn't allow residential, what we made is mixed use. So we started asking some of those questions to help then prepare the land use. So this is almost another leg of the information that's going to be used in the land use plan, and we actually have proposals in-house that we're reviewing currently, so that we can start parting up, because I mean, it's a very valid point you have. Transportation feeds land use, lands, you know, they're partners.
I hear what you're saying, and distill that just a little bit from what I heard you say. You've looked at the land use plan, you think that there are certain restrictions to traffic. What this says is you're making traffic more efficient, travel more efficient, by coordinating transportation investments with land use decisions. I think that's backwards. I think that transportation investment should be reflective of our land use decisions, and that's the point I'm trying to make. That's the reason I say that's a bad statement.
And it's a fair point, and you know, I just want to kind of reiterate to what Allison kind of said in the open, and this is what is fundamentally different about this process than any land use plan update that we've brought you in the past. If you get really drilled down into what the roles of this board is, they're, one of the main functions of this board is to develop policies, and, you know, to adopt the, you know, to help develop the comprehensive plan for the council to adopt. Traditionally, we get a draft of this, and we red印it, and we send it back. We made a very calculated decision this time to change that approach up. You know, we felt that it needed staff eyes to occur at the same time as this board, so that we weren't potentially interjecting any biases inadvertently, and that does happen. You know, there's a planner's perspective, and there's a citizen's perspective. So this is still, you know, I see fresh off the bus, so I think, I mean, these are really important statements that you're making, because this is a draft, and based off of staff's review and your review, we're going to come out with another version, and that's going to go to council. So all these points are very valid, and I just kind of would have reminded for the purpose, this is still wet. You know, it was designed on purpose, so if you're making those observations that we need appendices now, we can give this appendices now.
I think you missed the question. I'm talking about the growth and development statement that's on page four, and I, my statement now is, it's not about the appendices. My statement now is that statement's incorrect.
All right. Well, I was going back to the statement.
And I think, yeah, and I think that, and...
All right. And we can evaluate the language.
Yeah, and I could... develop the comprehensive plan for the council to adopt. Traditionally, we get a draft of this and we red ink it and we send it back. We made a very calculated decision this time to change that approach up. You know, we felt that it needed staff eyes to occur at the same time as this board so that we weren't potentially interjecting any biases inadvertently. And that does happen. You know, there's a planner's perspective and there's a citizen's perspective. So this is still, you know, I see fresh off the bus. So I think, I mean, these are really important statements that you're making because this is a draft and based off of staff's review and your review. We're going to come back with another version and that's going to go to council. So all these points are very valid. And I just kind of would have reminded for the purpose, this is still wet. You know, it was designed on purpose. So if you're making those observations that we need appendices now, we can give those appendices now.
I think you've missed the question. I'm talking about the growth and development statement that's on page four. And my statement now is it's not about the appendix. My statement now is that statement's incorrect.
All right. Well, I was going back to that.
And I think, yeah, and I think that.
All right. And we can evaluate the language.
Yeah. And I could, according to their demographics, the people of Morrisville, we're well educated. So maybe we're better off listening to the public than we're our staff. I don't know.
I think the spirit of that particular guiding principle was founded on maybe not travel efficiency, but the linkage of transportation and land use. So if land uses are complementary of each other, then perhaps our travel patterns will become more efficient because we're not trying to go everywhere for different things. But I appreciate the comment and if any suggestions that you have over the next week, we'll have the work session where we can really dive into this. We could potentially look at tweaking that wording. All right. Let's move into Chapter 2, which is existing conditions and background. And now this chapter has some content, just setting the stage. We wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence and looked into the current conditions. Obviously, there's been quite a bit of change in this area since the last plan was done. There was an existing conditions summary document that was prepared. That document is included in its entirety as Chapter 2 within here. So we had the opportunity to get that finished up, I guess, at the early part of this year. And that's been a basis for where we've ended up on that. So I don't want to go through the details of this because I know I have had the opportunity to speak to this group over the existing conditions in the past. Merely just noting that it does talk about land use, existing conditions, transportation existing conditions, socioeconomic, demographic, existing conditions as well. So I'm going to go ahead and move ahead to Chapter 3. And Chapter 3 is our roadways chapter. And I wanted to spend just a moment talking about the process, not only for this chapter, but also for Chapter 4, which are really our key modal recommendations chapters and the process that was used to kind of put these together. We wanted to try to be as holistic as possible in thinking about the different elements that are of concern when we look at all of these different types of modal solutions. And so taking into account basically all those same things that we looked at in our existing conditions, consideration of historic growth patterns, future projected growth patterns, which we do have the benefit of the recently looked at population employment growth information that was supplied to the region by your town staff. Also looking at land uses, understanding what the land use outlook is like in terms of the existing plan as well as planned growth that is upcoming, new developments that are being considered or are currently committed. And then also understanding some of the items that really came up as hot buttons with the public, such as safety and multimodal accommodations. So kind of bringing all of those together into a holistic look for this section. So I do want to provide just a little bit of information on the travel demand model. As you guys know, the travel demand model is a regional tool. It's a tool that really helps us understand what the travel patterns may look like across the region with population and employment forecasts that are kind of based on your guys' land use plans, they're based on your outlook for growth, and then combined in with other municipalities and jurisdictions across the region. So for this plan, we had a travel demand model that we received from Capital Area MPO, your MPO, that has an existing 2010 transportation network. So I know, I think everyone in Morrisville kind of laughs when we think about existing as 2010 because a lot has happened here since 2010. So we wanted to look at what that baseline was. So this is the baseline as of 2010, if nothing else were to occur. And then we take our time machine, we go out to 2040, we grow just like we think we're going to grow in terms of population and employment. And this is where we end up in terms of our congestion levels. Now, you all have seen these maps before. Red equals bad, blue equals good. There's quite a lot of red, there's quite a lot of approaching red, orange, and yellow within the Morrisville area. So again, that's existing as of 2010.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you choose the roads you chose? For example, as our public comment session just pointed out, you have Crabtree Crossing Parkway on there, you have James Jackson Avenue on there. How did they make the cut and others didn't make the cut? What's the criteria for deciding how you're going to designate what streets?
Sure.
You listed some roads on there and other roads you haven't.
That's correct, yes. So we don't actually make the determination of what is or is not included in the travel demand model. That comes from the region. And they typically are looking at functional classification of the roadways. They oftentimes look down to the major collector level for inclusion within the travel demand model. So that means like a minor collector or a local road is more often than not, not included. Again, it is a regional model and so they don't want to include every single road because it would require an onerous amount of data collection to maintain that. And it might not really accurately reflect the sensitivity of the model.
So if I understand you right, Crabtree Crossing has the same function as James Jackson Avenue, which has the same function as, am I, is that what you're saying is Marshall Parkway, it just happened to make the list?
No, sir, no. No, what I'm just saying is, in your functional classifications, you have everything from your freeways, your expressways, your principal arterials such as NC 54, other major arterials like aviation, airport. Those are all going to be included in the travel demand model. And then it will typically go one step further to those major collectors, which would be some of the smaller roads such as Crabtree Crossing, Parkway.
Crabtree Crossing, that is a major collector, is that what you're saying?
I would need to look it up to verify, but I believe it is classified as a major collector.
Okay, I'd like to know that.
Yeah, I can look that up and provide that information next week.
But it says it taxes classified. It says the V slash C is greater than, what does that stand for?
That's volume to capacity ratio. So there's a capacity for all of these roadways that is provided within the travel demand model, which is indicative of the number of lanes and the presence of whether or not it has a median. So all of those things go into its capacity as well as the speed of the roadway. So once that capacity is determined, then we understand what our volumes are. They actually do look at those traffic counts that are collected for all the different roadways to help determine that at the existing level. And then it's forecasted out to 2040. It kind of grows those volumes appropriately based on the forecasted population and employment. So you may have heard of level of service ratio. It's basically the same thing. The red here would be equivalent to level of service F.
Are the materials and the engineering of the road itself in that model as well?
They, I don't think it talks about surface type. If you're talking about paved versus concrete versus brick, obviously, they're not gravel or dirt roads in the model because they wouldn't come up to that functional class level. But I don't believe surface type is expressly qualified.
Might add here, on all these maps, and it's mine, but when you put a legend on there, it needs to have a date on it and it needs to have a title block on it. These maps have a way of finding their own life. And without those kind of things, somebody takes them out of context and views them as something else. They, every map you've got in here, you should do that. That's my opinion. Because what you do in this year, somebody will bring back five years later and say, "This was what we said we were going to do." And we can say, "No, this map came from such and such a document and it was a draft." So I think that's very important.
And to be clear, in the actual document, this is shown as the 2040 congestion with Miller-Greivitz. That's the same.
That's correct, yes. That's right.
Craig, to address your comment, in the document, the maps do have a title. They are labeled with what they are. These maps are also static. I mean, they're, the 2040 with committed from the 2010 model is not going to change. So there's...
I get that. I'm just saying, somebody's going to make a, they're all slick, they make a copy of it, they start passing it around, it gets to people, it gets to citizens, and it becomes... I'm just saying, when you put something on a map and you put those legends on the bottom of it, just put a title and a date on there of when that was. That's my take from it. But I, you can do whatever you want to your document and you're a consultant.
So I have just switched between maps. So let me show you, this is the map we were previously looking at. And I'll orient you to what you're about to see. This is existing 2010 network with nothing happening on it. So that includes things such as McCrimmon Parkway Extension, the work that's currently being planned on aviation. Those things are not in this map. Now, we have what we call committed projects, which are those things that are currently underway or have some funding allocated for them. Things such as McCrimmon, NC 54, aviation, Morrisville Carpenter. So what we have the ability to do is go in and adjust this map to factor in those committed transportation projects and of course, along the way, also update it so that things such as the new alignment of 540 with the correct interchange configuration that did change after 2010. So that's all reflected in the map that you see here. So this is really a valuable starting point for us as we start to look at what all is still showing up as a congestion issue for us into the future and what we may need to be looking at, again, purely from that congestion aspect. And I should say, the travel demand model is a lot of great information. It's one piece of information. This is not the end all be all for our roadway recommendations. It's a useful tool. We need to make sure that we pay it its due consideration because it is being looked at at a regional level and at a state level when we're considered for funding and for other improvements. But that's just something to kind of keep in your head as we continue to talk about some of the other elements that help drive our decision-making process here. So one thing just to point out here, you'll notice that on those locations where we do have committed projects planned, there are congestion decreases. When you compare this back to this angry red map here, which was the old 2010, you'll notice a lot of those problems have been alleviated. This is great news. That actually means the projects that are being planned are doing what they're set out to do. So we're happy to see that and then helps us give a better baseline for what our recommendations need to address. So at this point, I wanted to spend just a moment, and we teed it up earlier in this conversation actually, to talk to you all about scenario planning. I had the opportunity to speak with town council and give them this update just a week or two ago and wanted to make sure that you guys had access to the same information. When we're putting together our roadway recommendations, obviously, we're looking at things like the travel demand model, we're looking at safety issues, we're listening to what we're hearing from the public, and we're also looking at this scenario planning exercise. Now, this is not something that's required. I know we've talked about this before in a comprehensive transportation plan, but this was a lot of foresight, I think, by the town to include this. This is something that, as you heard, this is not a replacement of the current land use plan, but this is just a way for us to start exploring some things that are going to be brought back up when you do get into the revisiting of your land use plan and to make sure that your transportation plan is going to be able to accommodate what comes out of those discussions at a future date with the recommendations that are being made so that you don't then have to go back and iterate this process. So for the scenario planning, just quickly to walk through a couple of these things, we did look at three corridors, McCrimmon Parkway, NC 54, and Town Hall Drive. There were conversations that were held earlier with you guys, with town council, to help determine the exact extents and locations of these corridors. So I'm going to walk through these just really briefly and then I'm going to get to the report card, which is where we actually show the results of this exercise. So first, I'll talk briefly about McCrimmon Parkway. The point of this scenario was to start thinking about what the extension really does here. We all know that the extension is going to be a game changer for this corridor. And we need to better understand how land use decisions affect the new corridor and its surroundings and how that then transitions into the existing corridor as well. We looked at a couple of different alternatives that one explored more of a suburban-type uses and preserving industrial, and other focused more on regional employment and mixed NC 54, just to briefly touch on that one, we looked at a couple of alternatives there as well. We had, this has already been studied, you guys know, at the regional level from a transportation perspective. This is really our chance to look at the land use questions that are important to Morrisville and also those questions that are going to be coming up in your future land use updates. So things like looking at that higher education area that's coming online and understanding what if we were to add mixed uses that were supportive of that higher education? Or what if we were to build up the TOD, our transit-oriented development that's been planned near the intersection of McCrimmon and NC 54? And then also supporting residential that goes with that. And then finally, Town Hall Drive. As we considered that one, it was really an opportunity for us to think about how do mixed uses, a mix of uses, a mix of densities or intensities in the land use affect what we're seeing on Town Hall Drive and the movements there? Now, with any process that we do, we have to make sure that there is a set of evaluation criteria that we're measuring this on. The scenario planning process is no exception. So we have a series of scenario indicators. And you'll see some of the roll-up categories here, mobility and accessibility, culture and environment, growth and development, and economic vitality. Those are guiding statements of this overall planned process. They are a subset. These are the ones that are most relevant to land use as well. And so we use those as kind of our starting point to understand what things can we actually measure to help us answer how we're responding to each of those four things. And this is how we're responding to each of those four things. This is what we call our report card. This slide and the next slide are portions of the report card. I tried to blow it up nice and big so that hopefully you all can see it. Now, this is our, what I would call kind of the public-facing report card, though it can all be public-facing. This is the one where we try to, we have a large, large spreadsheet with lots of numbers that underpins this. Everything that you see here has corresponding numbers that show your baseline, which is essentially advancing your land use plan as it currently stands, and then also these scenarios. So once we've done that, we try to get it into a little bit more graphically interesting and easily readable format, which is what we call this report card. So essentially, what you're seeing here is everything has a midpoint with a dot and then a line. That's your baseline. And then we have arrows. Some are red, some are green, and that's showing you whether we're performing worse than the baseline or better than the baseline for each of those different indicators. And the length of the arrow indicates kind of an order of magnitude of that performance. So what we're seeing here is, for each of the scenarios that we did, we wanted to just understand, you know, are we ready? Are we prepared from a land use standpoint to accommodate this? Are we prepared from a transportation standpoint to accommodate this with the recommendations that are being considered along these corridors? And generally, we were happy to see that as we ran this through, and this is called the Community Viz model that we use for scenario planning. There is actually a regional version of this model. We were able to use that and give it a better level of granularity, just specific to these corridors in Morrisville when we used it. So that's kind of the basis of this conversation. We were pleased to see that we were performing well against the baseline generally in most of these areas. And there were things that we were able to kind of take away. So you can see right here, we're talking about mobility and accessibility and culture and environment. Next slide, we're talking about growth and development and economic vitality. That growth and development section there is a nice indicator of what exactly is changing with all of these alternatives. It's kind of hard to wrap our heads around. We have maps that show all of this in a fairly detailed level. But this is a summary of essentially how these areas could potentially change in these scenarios, which again, they're not part of your current land use plan, they may not be part of your future land use plan. That's not a question we have to answer here today. We don't have to pick a scenario. This is purely just, do we feel like what our transportation recommendations are doing responds to what is being shown potentially through these scenarios? And the answer was largely yes. We feel good about the recommendations, being able to accommodate these levels of growth, this type of change that is being considered along these three corridors. I think what we found as we started to look at these indicators is that they do emphasize the importance of multimodal accommodations along these corridors because there is a desire and a performance that is kind of able to be there of getting people in different modes of transportation, whether it's walking, biking, or taking transit. We see that... We see that reflected in these results here.
Under McCrimmon Parkway, protected green space, baseline zero. It's on the slide that you just had up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, there it is. And scenario one and scenario two is also zero, zero. I was wondering, can you say anything about that? Like, can't things change, or what's the deal with that?
I see. Yes, certainly, things can change. Again, I think the intent of these scenarios was to kind of hit it pretty hard. We were hitting these scenarios with a lot. We were hitting them with a lot of growth, a lot of increases in density. So that's why we're not seeing a lot of, we're not seeing an increase in protected green space, really, in any of these, simply because for the purpose of this exercise, we were intentionally going toward a denser, a more developed, a higher-growth situation. So yes, I think that would absolutely be something that you all would want to consider, not just that, but also the level of development, density, and intensity as you move into the land use planning exercises.
Allison, I'm sure you guys had fun doing all this. Nobody lives in Morrisville that's not a suburban setting. There are no rural in Morrisville. There's no city in town. What are you trying to tell us here? I mean, I'm sure you had fun doing it, but...
Well, those categories...
We got suburban homes in Morrisville. We got suburban people that live here. Your data shows they want to go to Raleigh, and they want to go to RTP, and they want to go there. So I'm glad you did all this. I'm happy for you. I'm sure all you guys had fun doing it. So what?
So the categories that are here are actually a roll-up of categories that are, I think we have, what, 42 different place types, and they're all shown here.
I don't dispute that. I don't dispute your academics, I don't dispute your methodology. I'm just saying, so what? We don't have any rural places in Morrisville that we got to worry about. We don't have any, we want to have a town center, we don't have one right now. Why did you put that in there?
Sure, so my point is simply that when you look at these roll-up categories, city in town is talking about a lot. When you look at the difference here, we're going all the way up to a TOD 3, which is something that you probably, you might not even see that in downtown Raleigh. This is a very intense transit-oriented development. All the way down to something like a town center, mixed-use center, Park West Village is your guys' biggest mixed-use center in this area.
It said it was going to be, it's not really mixed-use. You said it was going to be, but it's not.
It's categorized at the parcel level, and those are just roll-ups. So it's just a tool to kind of help us understand generally where those categories fall, so...
And if I can, these, all these place types were done, actually, they originally were created about three years ago, three or four years ago, through, by the region, through an MTP process, and they're regional place types. So they're, they're not meant to be Morrisville-specific or Raleigh-specific, and so when they were creating these place types for the region, they termed them, I mean, they categorized them as suburban, city in town, knowing that even someplace like Morrisville that probably doesn't really have a lot of city and true city in town development, or city development, we still have some city in town place types because it's all rolled up in big. And in all this, the scenario planning exercise, it was really meant to see, you know, to confirm, more than anything, that the transportation recommendations we're putting forth, or that have already, or the projects that are already underway, will contain, will still operate at a decent level of service if a bunch more growth is thrown at them, and that's what this confirms.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning, you know, your data or where it came or anything. I'm just saying, you guys did all this stuff, and you figured out that we got a bunch of suburban homes, and they want to get the I-40, and it took all this? That's, you know, we're talking transportation planning here. That was a nice exercise for all you planners to do, but I don't see where it got us.
Moving back to really again, this is focusing on the McCrimmon Extension, which is currently classified 100% industrial. You know, we wanted to ask those questions, you know, we are investing millions of dollars into a new road, and we wanted to say, is industrial the best use, potentially? There are other uses available. So for example, is Park West Village with that? You know, and so then we had to find Park West Village equivalent in that, you know, the grammar, so they classify sort of colors, it's really, and find one that best match. I mean, understanding that you have 15 jurisdictions, data, trying to go into those, and so it was a tough task on a regional level. And then terminology didn't make a whole lot of sense when you started reading their descriptions. I will have, I can bring it, because we went through, and I literally read, I'm like, okay, this makes sense, and then I read it, like, this is not what we want at all. So we went through, I personally thought the names were a bit kind of wonky, if you will, but when you went down and started reading some of the descriptions of them, and I can bring that, make sure we have...
Yeah, I get what you're saying. I'm not questioning that. I'm just questioning...
The areas we were looking at, you know, really, were the ones where we had the town center. That was the Town Hall part. So we're pulling in, is the town center model that was adopted, the model that we need to look at, or is the town center model that has much more intensity, that's being proposed and all this stuff, the best model? I mean, it can be handling. I mean, that was kind of the question. So that's why Town Hall was chosen. And then again, before we stood, I kind of pointed on that. So those were...
We weren't trying to do, you know, if we build it, can we survive kind of concept. It was more, you know, after the fact, you know, I think we've done a great job of having some great developments, and then we're stuck not moving on the roads. So we wanted to take the opposite approach of how much can we toss in there, and can that road network still survive? You know, and I mean, that was kind of the basic question that we were trying to ask. And if we found out that it couldn't, when we started then feeding into the new land use plan, we know, for example, if suddenly running all these mixed-use developments on McCrimmon make that road fail miserably, we know that is not a good use type that should be proposed there when we're going through and looking at it. And so that's really what this, I mean, but again, as you said, it's, there's a lot of theory that goes behind it. There's a lot of, you know, mathematician, you know, jargon that kind of goes in, if you will.
But we were really trying to be proactive to make sure that we weren't making any really bad decisions. I mean, this is really what we were trying to do. And I am not just going to base them on the terminology, it's not more specific, because it's not, because it is original model.
I appreciate that. I'm just saying...
But it's not reflective of current conditions. This is all projections.
I mean, they're saying, they went through an exercise to tell you that we need to work on NC 54. They went through an exercise to say, well, we need to widen McCrimmon Parkway. And now they're going to tell council that we had our consultant come in, and we did all this exercise, and I, George, were right. We did, NC 54 does need to have increased capacity. Man, we're smart. That's what I'm saying.
To me, it looks as though you have something that's a little bit more objective than just saying, we need to improve 54. I think what you're, what you're showing me on this particular screen here is that you've looked at two different scenarios, and you've made sure that the lines are green, not red. So it's a report card, right?
And if it's red, that informs whether or not that's going to be a good policy for more to establish the policies of this plan, as well as the future land use plan.
So the two scenarios that are outlined here, I see there's, the percentage makeup for each of these, city in town versus suburban, the types, and they change a little bit. Where are the scenarios mapped out specifically at? One versus two, in terms of what recommendations that are tied to those scenarios are? Or are we just saying, like, scenario two being more dense, you know, pushing the envelope as much as we possibly can on approvals, and in the development side of things? Even in scenario two, we can still handle, you know, we still handle the traffic that would come from that, I guess?
I think I understand your question. So what, this is just the first one I pulled up. This is a map of our baseline condition here for Town Hall. We actually have corresponding maps for each of the scenarios where it does, at the part, we actually changed parcel by parcel what it was going to look like with each of these classifications. So what I'm showing you in the report card is just a roll-up of all of that stuff. Okay. Okay, so now, let's move into just the rest of the content here in Chapter 3. As we mentioned, today is just an overview day, so it's not my intention to go through each one of these by themselves, but I do just want to point out that these are located in the plan and kind of describe some of the organization of what you're seeing. So as you get into the plan, I believe this starts on page 3-10, you will notice our recommended thoroughfare improvements. So we're talking about thoroughfares, these are some of our larger-type roadways. We have a series of different recommendations on here, inclusive of widening, inclusive of new location, inclusive of access management. What I mean by access management is things like installation of a median, looking at turning movements, where are we allowed to turn, where are we having those conflicts along the road? So what those often do is they maintain the current curb lines of the roadway as it's shown right now. Those are going to be smaller, more strategic improvements at certain locations that will help through a roundabout way, often improve capacity because they're reducing the unpredictability of the roadway section. So that's what I'm talking about when I say access management. So just for ease of looking at all of this through the document, we divided this into three separate sections. So we have the recommended thoroughfare improvements, which, as I mentioned, are access management, new location, and widening at the corridor level. We also have a series of intersection-level improvements. This was something that was of great interest. Obviously, intersection improvements can often have a smaller price tag associated with them. In your case, in the town of Morrisville's case, there are a lot of particular interests as we deal with the railroad and how we're going to be getting over or across the railroad. So those were things that we wanted to be considerate of as well. So you'll see, in this list, we do have general intersection improvements. We have not gotten into the minutia of what each of those may exactly mean, like if we're adding a turn lane on this approach, and what do we need to do at the signal at this approach? But there was an acknowledgement from many of these locations that there was a desire to improve safety at those locations, and that intersection-level improvements may serve to address some of those particular issues. So that's what we're showing there. You'll see intersection improvements, you'll see grade separations, and you'll also see a roundabout, which has been discussed on Town Hall Drive. And then the third section of roadway improvements that we are addressing within this is what we call connectivity-enhancing projects. So these projects, as we were about to move into a prioritization discussion, these projects are oftentimes not going to perform well at like a regional prioritization or town-wide prioritization level, if you look at things like congestion relief or service to activity centers, because many of these, as you'll see, not all, but many of these are very small geographically, so it's just hard for them to stack up. These are items that, as we had discussion, as we looked at the map, as we thought about opportunities for creating a more cohesive network, that these were identified. Some of these came up through the public process, some came through previous plan review, and others came through independent review as we went through the process. So you'll see a number of different locations shown in this area. And this is an opportunity, I think, on these connectivity-enhancing projects, since many of them are going to be smaller scale in nature, for the members of this group, as well as the town council, to think about policy-level improvements, whether this is something that we want to have as a more global policy, or if it's a one-by-one type of policy, just looking at connectivity and how that can be activated in those particular Once we went through identifying all of those locations, we have a discussion in the document about project prioritization. When I'm talking about project prioritization, here I am talking specific to our roadway improvements. So the intent of this prioritization effort is targeted at our roadway improvements. So what we did as a part of this process is we wanted to understand how we could best address our guiding principles through a set of measurable criteria. Now, some of those are what I would call quantitative criteria, things such as crash history, existing volume-to-capacity ratio, and volume-to-capacity reduction, which is looking at if we put the project in in a future year, is it actually improving versus what it would be without it? So those are quantitative. Those are things that we have numbers, we can measure this based on the tools that we have available, or the data that we have available in the case of crash history. Then we have what I'd call quantitative measures, things such as schools and community facilities, activity centers, and supporting transit routes. And those are things that are more spatial in nature, so we're just looking at whether the facility is going to serve one of those identified locations within the community, possibly whether that's enhancing connectivity, is providing options, is providing better service along an existing roadway. The supporting transit routes, you'll see on there, that is just looking at, are we accommodating buses on those sections and having a more multimodal, a more complete-streets approach? One thing that is noticeably absent here that I will point out is we don't have a category on here for supporting bicycle and pedestrian recommendations. The reason being is that for every facility that can support bicycle and pedestrian recommendations, we have recommendations already noted in the plan. So every project would basically score the same on that. We didn't feel like that was a valuable criteria to include here, simply because it is really part and parcel of what has been identified for the town to move forward with in terms of those complete streets cross-sections. So we did work through this project prioritization process. We looked at weighting criteria. I believe that Ben worked through an exercise with you guys at one of your more recent meetings. We also worked with members of the public that attended our workshop to help us understand how they would score these prioritization criteria. Once we did that, we kind of smoothed it out, blended it. You can see our suggested weighting that we used moving forward with this prioritization process, largely reflecting...
I don't understand the disparity. Why does public and PCB weighting 35% and you guys just think it's 20?
Yes, sir. So what we attempt to do is, we know that we're not gaining a statistically valid sample of public participation as we go through these processes, but we want to make sure that we get the opinions of those that choose to participate with us. And then we wanted to blend it out to make sure that we had other items represented that were kind of noted as priorities in the community. Now, this is something that can be modified. I would encourage, if there's any particular questions or desires to look at this in a different way...
So you make a big deal of public involvement, and you say you've drawn a map of it, and then when you get ready for your weighting criteria, you say, well, that really doesn't matter, we've got a better idea, you should do it like this. Is that fair?
I wouldn't characterize it in that manner, no. I would say that as you look between the two columns, that the order of magnitude is represented there, you'll see that the things that were weighted the heaviest from public and PCB are the things that received the highest scores in the consultant team's suggested weighting, and vice versa.
I don't see that. That's my question.
The three highest public and PCB-weighted criteria are the three highest shown in the consultant team's weighting as well.
They're all the same, but they're the three. There's no correlation among them.
No, they are even, that's true.
And the public and the board said they shouldn't be even, but you think they should? When I say you, I mean the authors of this document.
Of which I am the primary author of this document. So, yes, this is...
And try to help me out one more time. Why do you think that's the case?
Here's my input. So I am a professional engineer, as well as a certified planner. I feel that through these processes, we want to make sure that we are gaining as much input as possible, but I also don't want to discount the inclusion of planning knowledge and background that we've gained from experiences doing this in other locations, to make sure that we have a well-rounded plan that's going to best represent the needs of the community. So I feel like we would be doing the planning process a disservice if we did not include some of that professional judgment as we come up with our final scoring mechanisms. That being said, this is a draft plan, and I'm very happy to entertain any discussions about whether we should modify this.
I understand, I want to tell me that professional judgment that leads you to the conclusion that you think that existing congestion is only worth a fifth, and that everybody else that lives in Morrisville thinks it's worth a third. And I would, and I submit to you that people on this board, in the public, especially in this town, are, there's some pretty bright people there.
I agree.
So with all due respect to your certification and so these things, I'm just saying, we're not getting, you're not dealing with a bunch of hayseeds from wherever.
I completely... I completely appreciate that. As a longtime Morrisville resident, I'm now just over the border myself. I very much appreciate the character of this area. One other thing I would just note on the congestion, and we don't need to go into details, is that in the consultant team suggested weighting, that is a total of forty percent of the total score. I'm hesitant to make it much, much more than that simply because there are other considerations that we've heard expressed throughout our planning process, whether they be through our guiding statements, our priority pyramid exercises and other things. And oftentimes in the public workshop, we saw folks, we gave the option to put a couple of dots and they may put one on existing conditions and then also on future congestion. Not necessarily, definitely wanting to emphasize the congestion, but not at the expense of the other items. I guess I would say that.
If I can jump in here too. I mean, the consultant, it was a, it was a team between the consultants and staff that looked at these weightings and that really came up with the suggested weighting. Again, it's only suggestion, but you know, we were, we were also trying to look at this, keeping in mind that this is a comprehensive transportation plan. We're not just looking at widening roads. If, if we left congestion at eighty percent or seventy percent of the, of the weighting criteria, all we would have on there is widen the roads. And so we did want to take into account some of these possibly smaller projects that are probably closer to something that the town could actually fund itself potentially in the future that would benefit connection to activity centers, connection to transit, supporting transit. And so that's where we did use our professional judgment to try and even out some of that and take some of that congestion bias out of the plan because again, we didn't want this to be a road plan. We wanted it to be a comprehensive transportation plan. And we wanted to make sure to try and remove some of that overarching bias out of the prioritization criteria that can show up when you have congestion so heavily rated, ranked, rated or weighted.
Yeah, and I think that's the answer to the question, Ben. I think that's perfectly right.
It's that gut reaction when you see there were congestion that drives emphasis there, but in fact, all these things have connectivity to each other.
Right, there's a decent amount of overlap on that activity center, yeah.
If you have a school on the main road, then every day, two times a day, you're going to have congestion here because it's a school. And so some of these things do connect.
Yeah, and the first three, as you said, are quantitative and the last three are qualitative. That was what you said. So you know, it's hard to rank something that's qualitative because you, you don't have a, you don't have any data to rank it on. But I think, I think what Ben said is true. I think that's the answer to the question. You know, if you, if you put the additional percentage in transit routes, maybe it'll help the congestion. That's, that's the answer. That's, that's what, that's what you should tell people.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so just to kind of close, close the book on this section here. What I'm showing you on this slide and then the two subsequent slides are our near-term, midterm and long-term roadway priorities. And there is, this corresponds with the map that was on the previous page, which is in the document. Near-term roadway priorities are also captured in chapter five, which is our action plan, because we wanted to give those additional prominence since those were things that were identified for, for the near-term. One thing just to note, you'll see a blend as I go through the near-term, midterm and long-term of different project types, larger projects, smaller projects. They're, they're kind of mixed in throughout this, this grouping. Like I said, I'm not going to go through each one right now. You will note several of the extensions, the things that we talked about in our connectivity enhancing projects are in the long-term. That was again, what I mentioned, kind of an artifact of the, how this prioritization process is structured and how some of these smaller connections in particular may not always have the opportunity to score quite as well in a prioritization process, but should be looked at more from a policy level and just a desire of the town to consider connectivity options in those areas. Finally, I won't spend a lot of time on this because it is laid out in the chapter. We had the opportunity to look at some strategic corridors as a part of the roadway chapter. So these are not the top five corridors that you should be thinking about, but these are places where we thought we just might want a little bit more detail. We might want to just drill in a little bit more to see kind of what's going on in there, if there are particular areas of note that we should be aware of as well. And this was something, you'll see the, a copy of the exercise that we used with, with the public, looking at those corridors and having people help us understand what their priorities were for those corridors. And you'll see that they're not just roadway priorities. They have safety and congestion, but also multimodal. And so key quarters were an attempt to kind of look a little bit more and understand some of the existing conditions that are unique to those areas as well as recommendations for those areas.
So is this like the top recommendation?
These are not the top recommendations. These are simply areas where we felt like we needed to drill in a little bit.
For each one, there's a different color. I'm assuming this color corresponds to the key bike, walk, congestion appearance. Does that correspond or not?
No, I think they're, and we might want to consider, we don't have these two-
Okay, so there's no relation between these colors and the same colors that are on this other document?
Yes, you mentioned it, but no, the, no, that's, they're not juxtaposed next to each other within the document, but we need to clarify that, I think, so that-
Yeah, I was thinking maybe like you said, biking was something important on McCrimmon and you know, transit was important in this one other area.
No, just to tell them apart, that's, that's all the colors are for. So yeah, thank you for that comment. Okay. At this point, I'll move us on to chapter four. And chapter four is our alternative travel modes chapter. So it does consider bicycle and pedestrian and transit.
Allison, are you, are you okay? You need to take a break or you're okay?
I'm fine if you guys are, but we can take a break if you'd like.
We'll keep going.
All right. I've got my water. I'm ready. Thank you, guys. Okay, for the alternative travel modes section, again, this is inclusive of bicycle, pedestrian and transit. I did want to note that one of the things that we were able to do as a part of this process was spend a little bit more time and attention on greenways and multi-use paths through the area. There was a couple of different things that we had the opportunity to get to a level of recommendations that would then be folded in to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So there's been quite a bit of coordination with Parks and Recreation staff on those elements in particular as we move through this process just to ensure that we had a cohesive set of recommendations and thought process going on with them. So we tee up this section just outlining the benefits of active travel, of which I think most people in this community are well aware. We have heard strong support communicated for alternative modes of transportation throughout this process. So our process culminated in the development of a series of on-street bicycle facility improvements. I have the three key types of bicycle facilities that have been talked about for on-street locations shown here. That'd be a striped bicycle lane, a paved shoulder and then a shared lane marking, which is otherwise known as a share-o. And those are all described and there's some accompanying photos in the document as well. So again, we looked at previous plans. We looked at what Wade County was doing with some of their planning. We looked at our neighboring jurisdictions as what they were doing as well. The intent being to try to maintain a cohesive user experience, rider experience throughout. And then also paid particular attention about how all of these were going to come together with our multi-use paths within the area. So I'm calling this off-street bicycle facilities. It should probably be called off-street bicycle and pedestrian facilities because that is what they are. But just to give you a little bit more background on this, what you're seeing here in this map has a combination of, of multi-use paths. So we actually, what we did as part of this process included actually looking at terminology, how we're referring to these types of facilities within the town of Morrisville. So the way that we've kind of discussed with folks rolling this out is that as a roll-up term, multi-use path is being used as a term to describe either an off-street greenway or something that we would call a side path. And a side path is simply something that mimics that greenway type cross-section and width, but is along the side of the road. So greenway and side path are descriptive terms, both housed under the more general term of multi-use paths. And that is in line with the way things are being referred to now at, at the federal level, at the regional level as well. So we were just trying to kind of standardize how all of that was being referred to.
So a greenway and a side path are referred to at the same, they're serving the same function?
Not necessarily. No, they, they, multi, so multi-use pass is just anything that's a bicycle and pedestrian shared facility where traffic's not present. Side pass oftentimes serve a very different purpose from what a greenway does because they are along some of those commuter corridors where people have an opportunity for non-recreational travel.
And one of the purposes of trying to change the nomenclature in the existing adopted two thousand nine plan and also in the two thousand and eleven or two thousand thirteen Parks Recreation Master Plan that we currently have, we use sidewalk, wide sidewalk, multi-use path, greenway. We have different widths, multi-use paths. We have, you know, different width sidewalks. So we were, one of the things that we talked about at the very beginning was trying to standardize our nomenclature. And especially if we can standardize it to how it's, how the region is also looking at it too, it'll help us, especially if we decide to go for, you know, for, through some of these grant programs to get funding for it. And so that's where, after some research, Kimley Horn came back with, you know, multi-use path as the, as the umbrella term, but then side path, meaning it's right next to a road, it's beside a road, and greenway, meaning it's complete off-road away from the road facility. And it's more just trying to, to address our nomenclature issue that we currently have.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, Ben. And I think you told us that before and I appreciate that. I'm just saying, for purposes of our transportation plan, are we well advised to use greenways as part of our transportation plan? That's all I'm getting at. Or is it a recreational plan? You know, and I know you can't make the distinction, but maybe I'm splitting hairs.
Well, and that's one of the things that we, you know, we added in the green, greenways. After we started the plan, we actually did it as a change order or as an addendum to the contract. And one of the reasons that was is because, especially as our greenway network gets built out, more and more greenways are becoming more than just a recreational facility. They are becoming a commuter facility for bicyclists. And so we felt that it was a good, this was a good chance and a good opportunity to fold greenways into the transportation plan since they're, and especially not only here, but, but nationally, they're being looked at more and more as a transportation facility rather than just a recreational facility. And so we wanted to recognize that and make sure that all of our other recommendations we're making with side paths, multi-use paths, sidewalks and everything fold in well to the greenways. Because in previous plans, greenways were over here in transportation plan and we looked at sidewalks and multi-use paths and they didn't really necessarily talk together very well. And now we have them talking together. We can, we were able to really take a hard look and say, oh, look, we have a sidewalk here and a greenway here and we have this little gap. Let's provide a connector, which Allison will get to fairly soon, I'm sure. But so that was one, that was one of the big reasons we wanted to bring greenways into this plan.
Yeah, and so just to recap, you do that, you put all in the same place. So now we're treating greenways as bike paths. So they need to be constructed to this standard and this cross-section and, and the stripings and so forth and so on. I think we need to make everybody aware of when we, when we, you know, when you jump on that pony, you got to ride it.
And that's one of the things that actually we're, we're working on, or the consultants are working on that will be coming over the next couple of weeks is, is some, some more guidance, especially on the greenways. And one thing that will be, that they're going to look, that they're working on preparing is some, some overarching design guidance so that we can, you know, we, we have some design guidance down in our Parks and Rec plan for greenways. We still want it to be, we still want greenways to serve multiple parties and multiple uses. And so that's why, you know, we are taking this opportunity as well to take a look at our design guidance and, and try and update that a little bit to make sure that we are, we're serving more than just the recreational users or more than just the commuter users.
Yeah, and it can't be both. You can't say, oh, we got open space at a greenway. No, it's not open space anymore. It's, it's, it's a bike path. So you know, you just, everybody be aware of that when we jump on there.
So I'm pleased to see greenways as part of the transportation plan. When does a wide sidewalk become a side path?
So a wide sidewalk and a side path. Technically, the only difference is whether or not the sidewalk has a prohibition for bicycles along it.
Right, and how do we make that known?
Well, and that's where with, for, for this plan, as far as the nomenclature goes, from here on out, or once this plan is, is adopted in whatever form it is ultimately adopted, sidewalks will be five and six feet wide. They're, they're purely meant for, you know, they're the, they're what you would think as the traditional sidewalk. Side paths are really going to be, are, is really meant to capture situations where you're on a bit, probably a little bit busier road. You need, you either have a higher, higher number of pedestrians or you have a higher chance of having mixed pedestrian bicycle traffic. And so you need something wider. And so in our current transportation plan, we have on a few of our cross-sections an eight-foot wide sidewalk called for. Well, that's really a multi-use path or a side path. It's just in, for whatever reason, when the current transportation plan was adopted, at that time, they decided to call it a sidewalk. But then we also have eight-foot wide multi-use paths called for. And so we have the same width, same concrete facility called two different things in our existing transportation plans. And that's where with this one, we're trying to make that hard break. If it's a sidewalk, it's going to be five or six feet wide. It's the traditional sidewalk. If it's a side path, it's going to be more of what we've traditionally called a multi-use path.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to drag you into the weeds.
No problem. So one more weeds level comment before we get back up. The one other thing that you'll see in this map that I just want to make sure, there's not a cross-section shown for it, but it's neighborhood connectors. So neighborhood connectors are very small sections typically that connect from a neighborhood to an existing or a proposed facility that they may want to access. That's something that's going to have the look of a greenway. It's going to be a short spur type of thing, which is why there is not a separate cross-section indicated for it. But I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that that's another thing as you start to think about connectivity to our neighborhoods, to our areas, that's yet another way that you can kind of consider that connectivity when you're making those decisions about, should it be a roadway connection? Should it be a bicycle and pedestrian connection? That's kind of another option that's on the table. That's already something that's being looked at here within the town.
So over at Craftery Crossing, where there's a little blue line here that says existing neighborhood connector. So that definitely got into that greenway project?
I believe it did.
Anybody know?
Yes, we had that on the-
So it definitely, that, that connector is definitely in the greenway project? Between Craftery Crossing and the new greenway that's being built?
Yes.
Okay. I know at one time it was kind of back and forth, so.
No, the, the southern connector is, at one time, we had a connection from the greenway up to Town Hall Drive. That was removed from the construction project. We're now working on trying to get that back in now that we end up-
All right, that's the part that was, all right.
So one of the other things we had the opportunity to do was think about the amenities and the general characteristics of these multi-use paths within the town. And so this is something, again, it ties back to that same type of roll-ups of our place types. There's a, the little corresponding graphic in the, in the page in the document. But just to give a little bit more detail of what are we talking about in terms of a surface treatment in certain areas of the community? What should our striping look like? What are we talking about in terms of crossing treatments, lighting or other amenities along the corridor? So those are just different things that town staff and this group and council can leverage as you start to think about how you're looking to design or in some cases enhance your facilities in the future. And then finally, kind of to wrap up this section, we also looked at prioritization for multi-use paths. We wanted to look at this prioritization in a different way than how we were looking at our roadway prioritization. So you won't see a grouping of near-term, midterm and long-term here. So, you won't see a grouping of near-term, mid-term, and long-term here. Instead, what we were attempting to answer was some questions about connectivity, activity centers served, the feasibility of construction. We wanted to make sure that all of that information was available because different things are gonna become more important at different times, and it's, different things are gonna be more important depending on the location. So, hopefully, by supplying that information, that just gives another piece of information as the town considers how best to move forward with the construction of independent multi-use pass. So, and I say independent multi-use pass, let me just clarify, what I'm talking about here are projects that would not be happening with a roadway construction project. These would happen all by themselves. If something happens with a mult, with a roadway project, we didn't feel like we wanted to prioritize that because it communicates, uh, I think perhaps the wrong message that that might be funded and moved forward independently even before the roadway gets underway with its improvements. So, that's what we're seeing here. And I know that already, Ben and I have corresponded about some modifications, some tweaks to this, uh, that we may be making in a couple places. To close out the chapter, we had a discussion of transit. We have the benefit through this plan of looking at the Wake County Transit Plan, of which you guys were active partners and continue to be actively involved with the process. And so, I think the takeaways that we had for transit within this plan are to consider the regional connections that are being discussed for the area, and then also considering the potential opportunity for future local service. This plan does not go into things like identifying potential routing for a local service or stop locations, or even specific destination points served, but it's really an acknowledgement of the fact that that's something that should continue to be considered and looked at with potential funding availability coming from, uh, sales tax. There's also an acknowledgement of the transit-oriented development in the area and looking at that particular location and carrying that statement forward within this plan. Okay, we've got one more chapter left, and then a little bit of appendix stuff, you won't be done yet. Um, all right, so now, I wanna talk to you about the action plan. So, Chapter Five, the Action Plan, attempts to hit some of the highlights about really moving, moving the ball forward on this stuff. How are we going to, um, how are we going to move forward, and what do we need to support some of that movement? So, as we look through this, we first wanted to consider policies and programs for the town. One of the things you'll notice on the second page of Chapter Five is we have a table that actually discusses some of the existing or under-development policies and programs in the town. It's important to note that your town, and you guys are certainly very well aware of this, has been active and, um, very on top of things in terms of getting a set of supportive policy measures that really help to advance the transportation and land use goals of the area. So, we wanted to acknowledge that first and foremost, and then also think about some potential additions, or tweaks, or enhancements. And these are not things that we're saying that you must do, these are things that could be considered as you go, as you start to look at other recommendations, if you feel like the recommendations need to be enhanced from a policy level or further supported from a policy level. And so, that's what this list is really attempting to do. Again, I'm not going to go through them in detail, I will just note that we have things in here that are focused on roadways, bike pad, transit, as well as, um, just general cohesion with land use and your UDO. We also have a section in the action plan about transportation technology. Now, in all of our comprehensive transportation plans, I would say this is probably the newest type of section. In fact, this is the first one of these I've had the chance to, to write for this type of ACTP. Really thinking about, you guys have a couple of great things going for you right now in terms of transportation technology. We have the Townwide Coordinated Signal System, which is going to be progressing through NCDOT, um, over the next couple of years. And so, that's a great opportunity to be making some wholesale changes, and then some continued improvements, really continuing to enhance the overall operations of, of your signal network within the town. Also, there's some regional transportation demand management programs that do exist here in our, um, they're really gaining some traction in many areas, and so, that's something that we wanted to continue to note, town support of those initiatives, uh, which are being initiated elsewhere, whether it's through Go Triangle or others. So, the, the new section of this is the emerging technology side. And this is something that we felt like was really important to include as a part of this plan because it's going to continue to have ramifications for us. We're looking on out into the future quite a ways in this planning effort, and everything that we hear is that there are going to be some significant changes to the way that we operate our vehicles, to the way that we get around, and the transportation choices that we make. At this point, a lot of those are, are kind of hazy in the future. For any expert that you get that tells you that capacity is going to increase on your road, you have another expert that's gonna tell you that it's gonna decrease on the road. So, right now, we don't really know where we're landing on a lot of those different things. So, what we had the opportunity to do is, I'm fortunate to work with folks in my office that actually do this type of work. They've worked with NCDOT on their statewide policy and rollout for some of these connected and autonomous vehicle treatments, as well as other places even around the world. So, looking with them, with them to kind of help understand what things should be on the forefronts of our minds. What should the town be coordinating with other agency partners, other jurisdictions to kind of make sure is being considered as we look at transportation solutions into the near, medium, and long term? So, that's what's being discussed in that area. And again, we tried to look at all the different types of facilities that might be impacted here, so it's, it's everything. It's roadways, parking, bike pad, transit, and land use as well. Finally, the section wraps up with a discussion of funding and financing, and this is another area in which the town of Morrisville has been very proactive. With the Blue Ribbon Commission on Transportation Funding, there's been an in-depth examination of many different financing and funding sources, and how those may be able to be rolled out or continued within the town of Morrisville. So, this was our opportunity to acknowledge that study and to carry forward some of its key findings into the documents that, again, you kind of have everything in your comprehensive transportation plan in one place. All right, so that's the main body of the document as it currently stands today in its draft form. A couple of other things I just wanted to point out as you do your review that you may wanna take a note of is our Appendix A. We're calling that our standardized cross-sections. What we've attempted to do within this appendix is come up with a series of uniform cross-sections that allow for a level of flexibility within their application, but also are sensitive to the types of land uses through which they pass. And so, you'll see kind of this initial table, which is really the guide of how these cross-sections could be applied. Each of those alphanumeric identifiers is tied in with one of the standardized cross-sections. So, that appendix simply just rolls out that table that helps you understand the correlation there, and then also the standardized cross-sections themselves. You'll notice when you get into things like our key corridors and also our project sheets that there are actually specific cross-sections for those areas. We didn't try to force everything into one of these general cross-sections, but we felt like this served as a, a good guide for the types of facilities that the town may need to be prepared to consider in the future. And then, also Appendix B, those are our project sheets. So, for each of our roadway projects, our major roadway projects, we had the opportunity to put together a project sheet that discusses all, just a lot of the at-a-glance stuff that you might want to know about the project. So, obviously, its name and extends its length, what kind of project it is, but also giving you some of that existing and future volume information, congestion information, crash information, also a cross-section that correlates with all of those. And so, we do have a couple of tweaks that we're going to be making on those, and there's a couple of the cost estimates in particular that we're gonna take a second look at and get some of our roadway folks pulled in as well. So, that was a lot of information. I appreciate all of you all bearing with me and asking your questions, and I'd happy to answer any additional questions that we have at this time. And I guess, going back to what I had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, if there's any other pieces of information you can think of right now that we can look at over the course of the next week to have information to get back to you at the work session, we're very happy to do that. And if you don't think of it today, please email Ben, we can do it that way, too.
Thank you, Allison.
Ben, do you have anything to add?
Um, just a couple of things to add on the appendices, um, to possibly, um, to answer some of your questions before they're asked. For Appendix A with the cross-sections, you'll notice that in the draft that you have, there are no, there are no dimensions on those. We are working on that, so that was one of the first comments, and the, what we've been, what the consultant team and staff have been talking about for a long time, since we've started this process, this process and this project, is that we want to add flexibility where possible in, into the, into, um, the plan, and also trying, we're trying to align a little, you know, a little bit better where we can with DOT, especially on DOT roads, because we run into situations where our current plan shows something, and we go to DOT and they say, no. We have several instances, Church Street comes to mind, we've had projects up and down, and our plan calls for a four-foot bike lane, DOT says, no, you can have four-foot shoulder, but no bike lane. So, we have cases where we've, you know, we've, to meet the plan, we have developers who've had to go in and stripe a four-foot shoulder, but they can't put even the bike lane signage or, or pavement markings up. So, with that said, so, and then the other problem we've run into in the past with our current plan is that our cross-sections are very prescriptive in our current plan, and we've had some situations where they're almost too prescriptive. And so, that's where we're, we need the, we do need the dimensions, we need to know what the right-of-way is gonna be, we do need to know what the lane widths and the cross-section elements, you know, their dimensions, but at the same time, we want to try and have at least a little bit of flexibility for some situations where, you know, may, you know, where there, where there, it makes sense to have some. So, that's one of the things we're working on with the consultants, is to get some, get those dimensions, um, and, and figuring out the best way to provide those while still, where possible, having a little bit of flexibility, understanding that, you know, for some things, there's not gonna be flexibility. Right-of-way width, maybe one of those where, you know, we either have a small range or, you know, this is your right-of-way width, but, so we're working on that, and that'll be, probably get back into Appendix A with all the cross-sections. The other, um, thing is, in Appendix B, we're going, where we've asked the consultants to provide some more information on the cost estimates, um, and specifically trying to get a little bit better idea and have some language in that appendix about how the cost estimates were derived, understanding that they are planning level, they are very high level, but, you know, have a little bit of, of information in there about, you know, make sure we know their, their 2017 cost estimates, they're not, you know, they're not 2025 cost estimates, but also have some information about how they were derived, sort of what standards, you know, if we were NCDOT standards used for planning level and whatnot. So, that, that type of information will be put in, and we're also, hopefully, we'll have a little bit more information, at least by next week, on some of those specific cross, some of those specific cost estimates in that appendix as far as, you know, how, you know, what, what went into those, that some of the ones that we know people are probably, that there's probably gonna be some questions about, so that we can have a little bit, a little bit better discussion about this, you know, if someone says, well, this cost estimate looks low, we can explain, well, this is what went into it. So, we will have some more of that information as well.
I, I would, in that term, where you've got planning level cost in your template, I would think of something different. I'd put estimate in there or something because planning level cost means different things to different people. And I would try to think of some kind of terminology to make it clear as an estimate, and do all those things you spoke of. I don't know where there's, with the, uh, you know, with the, I don't know how you do it, but I'd sure change that. And with traffic volume, I'd certainly say consistent, you know, you've talked about traffic volumes throughout the paper, and make sure that the traffic volume, you're measuring the same way that you measure everywhere else, to be consistent through there. And on the street hierarchy, there again, make sure, and, and that's there, and when you're looking at appendix, I don't know if it wouldn't be a, this is me, this is just the way I do things. I'd, I'd have a glossary or, or something somewhere in there that, that puts that there. I, this, this may, makes it easier for the reader to, to flip back and understand, and we've got it in our, our, in our other documents, very, very helpful.
In, in the document, there is some, in Chapter Three, we do have some explanation of the street hierarchy, but we can certainly build on that.
Yeah.
And make sure it's.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. I think we can add that to the beginning of that section.
Yeah, yeah, somewhere in these, because we start talking about at the beginning of the document, different things, and then we start, we just throw in these terms that most people, especially in, in your realm of work, would understand, but.
Right.
Not all readers would understand that.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I have a question on the, the congestion ratio, 2010-2040, are those both, assuming the improvements are done by then or not improved, or what does that relate to?
Yeah, that's actually.
It might be good to have like width improvements and without.
That's something that we're planning to add as well. That 2040 is.
Because you might look at this and say, oh, well, it's only .46, and it was .42 before, so why do we need to spend that $22 million? Well, that's with the $22 million being spent, I'm assuming, so.
Yeah, good comment, thank you.
In the, uh, in the spirit of thinking about next week, some information I would like you to bring if you possibly could. You know, we all know, living in Morrisville, that we have a traffic issue, and we all know that very little of that traffic originates or is destined for Morrisville itself, it's mostly from elsewhere. As I look at the connectivity issue, and Crabtree Crossing is one, it would be very important for me to understand, at least on the broadest level, as finely as you can, in fact, you know, is the traffic likely to go on these extra connections from Morrisville, or are we making it easier for somebody from Northwest Cary to get to I-40, or to avoid Cary Parkway? And I know we're looking at a town plan, but, you know, the fact of life is, we are the town through which a lot of traffic flows, so we have to look at a more regional level. So, is that something, I have a brief discussion with, with Ben, but is that something that you could bring by next week?
Um, so, I think the first thing that I'll wanna do is, I work very closely with our travel demand modeler, who would be best positioned to try to pull some of that information out of the model. The model can take us to a certain point, it's probably, it may not be able to take us all the way. Oftentimes, we have to look at origin and destination analysis that, that actually kind of pulls that in, but let me work with him to see what information that we can gather that tries to satisfy that question.
Thank you. So, let's go down the line. Rob, any, particularly, I'm, I'm looking for anything that we can ask before we go through the plan in, in detail, so any more information?
I'm good.
No.
I, I think I've interrupted, but I'd be remiss, page 224, second paragraph, you say 12 Amtrak trains go through Morrisville on a typical day? It's only six. Sorry.
Pardon?
There's only six.
224?
Yeah, it's page, page 2-24. In the second paragraph, you say 12 Amtrak trains through Morrisville on a typical day, there's only six Amtrak trains through Morrisville, and with potential to add two more.
Three in each way.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's freight as well, does it mention the freight?
I'm sorry?
Does it mention Amtrak and freight?
It does in the previous line.
Okay.
But in that line, it only says Amtrak. So, they've got that number wrong. And the, the other thing, I, I think I've said it already, but let's make sure that anytime we publish anything that's a draft, either put it as a, as, as a watermark, or put draft on it somewhere, so that it doesn't come out as, this is the document, because we've got concerned citizens that are coming to the table, we've got people in the community that are concerned, and the answer so far, we're telling them, well, this is only a draft, but it looks like a finalized document.
Thanks, Chris. Benny?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you so much, Allison, and we look forward to seeing you again next week.
Very good. Thank you all, I appreciate the time.
We don't have much of an agenda left, but I'm gonna suggest we take a 10-minute break, if that's all right with everybody.
We are experiencing technical difficulties both days. I am aware that it's taking place.
We are experiencing technical difficulties. I am aware that it's taking place. So, if we could take the break so that I can get some stuff up and running again, five minutes is all that I need. That would be really great.
All right. Five minutes.
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is related to modifying or revising your 2017 board schedule. It's to add the work session that's next week on the 21st. So, we've seen a motion and action in order to modify your schedule.
Somebody like, make a motion to change our schedule as shown.
I make a motion that we adopt the document revise planning
Meetings.
and zoning board, 2017 planning zoning board revised schedule as proposed by staff.
One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And actually, Rob, you are now a voting member because a regular member has left.
I see as much.
Congratulations.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, staff comments. Oops, and I just completely closed that out. Sorry about that. Let me, I can do this.
We know you can.
See if I can try and pull it up this way here. So, for staff comments, we have our newsletter that we send out every single month. New development applications. We had a Capital Bank. It's located in the Park Place Shopping Center. It's the last out parcel in that development. We also had the Morrisville Solid Waste Transport Station that was submitted. You may remember a special use permit not that long ago. This is the site plan associated with that permit. And a new rezoning application on Wilson Road. This one's actually currently located in the town of Cary, but the parcel is closer to the town and Morrisville border. And so, per statute, it needs to be annexed into the town of Morrisville in order for them to receive water and sewer services, because it has to go to the closest jurisdiction. So, there is going to be several amendments that will be seen related to that, as well as annexation, information to bring into our jurisdiction so that they can redevelop the site and receive water and sewer services.
I have a question, going back to the Capital Bank. So, in Park Place, like, that's not showing up on the development services map. Is that just not been added yet, or do those things don't show up because of the level they are?
It's, it's not showing up on the services map, so I will go and take a look at that.
Because I know sometimes with Park Place, like, it kind of shows us one big parcel, and it's kind of hard to tell the individual things, but.
Where is Park Place? I am totally blocking.
Park Place is if you're heading south from 54th, past Park West Village, the food line shopping center.
Oh, okay.
It is showing up. I was looking at Park West.
Ah, great. Thank you. And then for the administrative approvals, we have several bulletin drawings approved this month. We don't always include bulletin drawings, but what I know, there's going to be a noticeable difference out there to the general public. I do include them. In this particular case, Public Works, if you visit their facility, they're modifying their entrances. Probably there's no covers. So, if you try to put your password in to get into the lot facility, it's raining, and you get a little wet. Element Hotel, they're revising their building materials. They're still complying with our standards, but they're using different masonry products that actually look like wood to change up the look of their site for branding. And then Town Hall North, we had to modify lot lines as well as tree preservation areas. And that's associated with, under the UDO, we now have maximum lot coverage per lot for town hall developments. So, they had to change lot lines in order to build the product they were proposing on building and still comply with those regulations.
They had to make the lot lines bigger and more trees?
Well, they had to make the lot lines bigger. The tree actually was related to a conflict between a rodent footprint that had to occur in some area where they're proposing on installing trees. So, now they're going to have to mitigate the loss of those trees. Just sometimes you get out in the field, there's things that you had no idea that exist. And that was just one of those examples. Then for Town Council, they did approve the rezoning. And this is for the site that this board recommended to buy along. But it did receive a favorable approval at the Town Council. The other news is just really updated the transportation plan update just to highlight what the activities occurred over the past month.
Gosh, sorry.
Do you have any questions regarding the newsletter? I'm happy to answer. Yes.
Element Hotel building material revised. Did, I guess, fire safety looked at that.
It's just the masonry. So, it wasn't, it's not the internal structure. That was a review that we picked up during the planning review process, which is a little bit different. I included building inspectors as well as fire officials. This is the skin of the building. So, just what the masonry looks like is different through that process. And that does not require a review by, through building code that way.
Where's the Element Hotel being built again?
The Element Hotel is located next to Four Points and the Blue Jameson Airport.
Okay. Is it going to be prettier?
Um, I don't know. My idea of pretty and somebody else's idea of pretty may not match. I thought it was pretty cool personally. You know, once it's built, you can tell me that it's prettier or not. I think it's neat to see different products. So, I've seen the masonry product at a Starbucks. They use it. So, you know, you have tile floors now that look like wood floors. So, there's a masonry product out there that's very similar now. So, they're starting to use that and actually instead of wood. And for our code regulations, we, it has to be 75% masonry. So, they're able to trade on a variety of looks versus an all-masonry structure. So, it's kind of a neat change in texture and pattern that we're going to see hopefully in more buildings.
It's like a horizontal, horizontal like wood siding look?
It does. But, you know, it's really akin to the tile that you see. It's very similar to that.
All right. Move on to item 10. Lee, any comments?
No more comments.
Craig?
No. Thanks to Ben for all the work you've done on the transportation update. I, I hope we get where we need to be with that. And I hope we get a lot of, a lot of buy-in. And believe me, people are talking about it. It's already on the street. And we hear from people. And don't, I guess, my message is, we shouldn't disparage people because they talk about it. And maybe they're not as good a transportation planner as you are. But on the other hand, you know, people need to be heard, and we need to tell them why something's done. So, but anyway, thank you for all you've done on that. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Craig. Arlene?
Well, I would like to comment that I'm really happy we're having the chance to annex Cary. I like that.
We're working on Preston next.
We already have part of Preston.
That's all.
Rob? Okay. I'm going to raise something that's not going to be popular, I'm afraid. This, this electronic packet business isn't working for me. I end up printing it. And, I mean, I don't mind coming to the town to pick up the packet, but I wish we would just look at that. And
Don't feel bad.
Yeah. And I know I'm a dinosaur, but it works for me. And, you know, having served on the board a long time, I, I'm not looking for, for praise or recognition. I do this because I strangely actually enjoy it. But it was kind of a perk to have, wow, every Friday or every, you know, every month on a Friday, someone would actually drive up my driveway and give me a packet. I felt really special. I don't feel very special anymore. Here's a link. So, just a point.
Maybe a Hershey Kiss up there.
I'll hold you to that. I don't know. I think Esther would probably be in the dinosaur department as well.
I'm in the dinosaur department, too. Absolutely.
But if you could make a printed packet available for us to pick up, I think that would be a good compromise.
We can talk about it. I'm not going to say yes, and I'm not going to say no.
Okay.
That would save, you know, time, as far as somebody bringing it.
It does save time for us bringing it, yes, which did equate to potentially about eight hours of staff time for delivery, because two people had to ride together. Just due to safety reasons, we've had dog issues and things like that in the past.
Just want us to drag the dead body away after the attack? Is that what?
At least they, one person could drive off and leave the man himself. You know, but there is a time cost actually associated with, those costs associated, pretty much time cost associated with protein. But we will talk about it. We'll wait for a confirmation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maybe we could ask Martha if the planning and zoning, the planning department could have a really whiz-bang copy machine that, you know, no problem.
I second.
You want me to, you want me to preface my answer with, "You won't like my answer." Aside, and, and we hear you, you know, we recognize and understand our role is to serve you. And as Courtney's indicated, we'll talk about this. But this is a directive from our council to move into the age of technology. And it does really enhance our public engagement processes. So, that's why we implemented the agenda software that we did. We did many, many, many hours of research to find the best product, recognize there's always growing pains with a new product. And we do want to hear from you about ways to make that easier. But we'll, we'll continue to talk about this. It wasn't done because we didn't want to provide you paper copies. There's lots of reasons why we were directed to develop a comprehensive management system for not just council, but for all of our boards and committees. So, think about all of the boards and committees that staff supports and the amount of work that's going into those. If you just consider that for us, please.
Can we come up with a dinosaur defense to Town Council? Maybe they would, you know, have pity on us. What do you think?
I wonder if they have a drone delivering it. I think that would be fun. So.
Honestly, we have a board adjustment member that doesn't have a computer. So, I mean, we have to create an email account for him. Well, you know, I mean, so we're, there have been some modifications. So, we want participation, but we will talk about it.
I'm not a PDF expert, but is there an easy way to take this nice, large, legal-sized format and get a full-page, eight-by-eleven format out of it? So that, for most people's printers, it's easier to, if you want something printed and you want to look at it on paper, you can see it better.
For the, are you talking about the document that we printed out?
Yeah. I mean, it looks like you have a regular
Yeah, well, we easily do scale it. It's not, that's not a difficult task at all. And we did offer everybody a paper copy of, you know, this because it is me here and, you know.
Right. Thank you. So, any other items? If not, let's move to number 12, if you have something, or that's just a link. All right. So, we don't need to discuss that.
It's a link.
So, 13. Who would like to make? Rob, you are now a voting member, so you can actually introduce a motion. So, this is your opportunity to.
So, I'd like to motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
There you go. Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.